Great, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the November 17, 2021 Special Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everyone please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka, absent. Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil, absent. Alderman Shelton?
Here.
Six of eight members are present.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval or amendment of the agenda. Are there any changes? Any objection to approving same by acclamation, seeing none, it will be so approved. Next up, citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes. No one's online, okay, we will move along. Brings us to new business, and that is ordinance number redistricting resulting from the 2020 census data. And are we having this Whitney handling this? You have it. Why don't you fill us all in on what's going on?
So we now have the 2020 census?
Is your microphone on? Yeah.
Of course not.
There we go. That's better.
Whitney Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. We now have the 2020 census tract data for each of the wards and block groups that have been provided. We are at a current deviation from the highest at Ward 1 of to the lowest at Ward 3 at 11.62, I believe. Hold on. I'll look that up. And so we have in the packet three options, as you can see. The courts have held that any deviation needs to be less than 10% from the highest to the lowest. So we've come up with three options, with y'all's help, that all bring that into in compliance. The option that I showed you on Monday night had a max deviation as 6.27%, and that included, if I can get this to work, that included moving three blocks from Ward 1 and two blocks from Ward 2 that are west of Brentwood Boulevard into Ward 3, and moving one block.
Hang on, you're not, the picture's not on. Looked in, yeah.
There you go. So you can see those here, and then moving one block from Ward 3 into Ward 2. While it doesn't affect anything, we have, for continuity and prior discussion, moved all of Brentwood Skidmore into Ward 4. Alderman Plufka and Lockmiller provided another option. Gould, I'm sorry, Gould and Lockmiller provided another option that actually has a little different, but has a better max deviation at 5.1%. And they are moving several blocks. Okay, wait. That map. So it's in your map? Yeah, it's in the handout before you. Is that it? No. So, yeah. So they are moving the three same blocks that I had moved, that are in Ward 1, as well as the block just south of that into Ward 2, and then moving this block over here, and the ones to the south of that into Ward, from Ward 2 into Ward 3. And that would give us a max deviation between the two of 5.1%. They are also showing the Brentwood Square moving all the way into, also into Ward 4. Then Alderman Weggie provided a third option that not only includes all of Brentwood Square into Ward 4, but also suggested moving Brentwood Promenade all the way into Ward 4 as well, and that does not affect their numbers at all. This would give a max deviation of 8.31%. He does show that the blocks that have been under discussion would then move into Ward 3, and keeping Ward 2 largely the same. See his block wards there. If y'all wanted to look at anything else, I can pull up the spreadsheet I shared, and we can start playing around, or we can get into the debate of these and go from there.
Let me just, let me just ask, Whitney, so what we had, what was handed out to everybody, there's option 1, 2, and 3 on this?
Right.
Is this what, what staff put together? I mean, it's, option 2 is from Gould, and Lockmiller, and 3 is from Weggie, right?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay.
Actually, Weggie put it all together in one document for us right before the meeting, so we just printed it all.
Oh, he did, okay, okay. Oh, so it does reflect the map. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
And the other question that I had was, have you or our city attorney had a chance to review the proposed or the possible options 2 and 3 for complying with anything that has to be complied with in terms of legality? I don't know if there is anything. I know there are some rules, so I don't know. Just thought I would bounce it off to.
We do look at existing wards, districts, and incumbencies. We also checked with St. Louis County regarding the voting precincts. He's, Bola and I spoke to him today, and he said that that doesn't really matter, because their voting precincts will change based upon our ward district changes.
Okay.
They also suggested looking at the school board, but our understanding is all of Brentwood's in one school district, so that doesn't affect that.
Okay, so options 1, 2, and 3 are all legal?
Correct.
Yeah, the only thing that, that I haven't been able to go through is, I don't think it would affect any incumbent. That would be just one thing that I would just want to make sure of.
Oh. I think you all could tell us, right? If you're.
And by that, you mean like, I'm no longer an alderman of Ward 2, I live in Ward 4?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I think I'll represent the world fine.
Yeah, we moved you into Ward 5.
As a, as a self-appointed cartographer of the group.
Thank you. It's nice and comfortable.
Okay, great. See, I told you, we're a fun city. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to keep this fairly informal, because I don't know how else to do it when we have three possible options. Whitney, do you have a preference? Is it staff's recommendation to go with 1, or does staff, at this point, doesn't?
I, I really, I like the lowest, the max deviation. I think that provides us with a greater.
Which is number 2.
Which is number 2.
Okay.
It is the lowest. If you would like to justify or state what you provided that.
So what do you need from, from the board tonight? I thought I saw something about, we can't do anything tonight, is that right?
No, we will need direction on which way, which way you want to go, which district, so then we can create the legal descriptions for the ordinance and provide the maps for that.
Okay. So if they come up with some proposal tonight, if they decide on a particular option tonight, you'll go back and?
Finalize, get a legal description of all the wards, finalize the maps, and then bring it back.
Come back for a second, to formally adopt it.
Another special meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So we're not going to be taking a motion tonight necessarily for, can we do that?
We, we, not a motion, but.
That's what I was getting to. I did.
Correction.
Yeah.
So that we know what the consensus is.
But that, I guess that could be subject to change then by the time of the next meeting. Is it possible to have just a motion tonight, to vote on it tonight, subject to the legal descriptions being put together? I mean, if you're going to come back with the legal description, I'm not sure any of us are going to be able to read that.
You can certainly do a motion to approve one of these options, and then that would, you know, give us more support when we do put the legal descriptions into the ordinance.
Okay.
You are going to have to approve the ordinance, and it's going to be very difficult to make those last-minute changes, just because then we would be scrambling to change all these legal descriptions, which are pretty lengthy.
So you have to put together the ordinance also. That's why we'd have to have the second meeting. Okay, okay. Well, then, I guess with that, I'm going to open it up to any, anybody want to make a motion to go with a particular option? Alderman Weggie?
I'm not going to make that motion yet, but I do think we could sever one thing, and that is the parcel or block 2006 up in the, I mean, it seems to me that that's kind of a consensus that has zero population, and it just makes sense to move that into Ward 4. And I know that was a topic of discussion 10 years ago, when they read the redistricting, so that might make it a little easier just to take that off of all of our plates.
Does anybody have an objection to doing that?
It's, it's shown in option number 3. Well, and he showed it all on his as the option, but it's actually 2007 on this map. It might be the 2006 on the previous census map, but that would be all of the Brentwood.
Like 2007 or 2006?
It's the, 2006 is already in there. Hold on.
I think 2006 is, 2006 looks like Brentwood Square, the southern part of Brentwood Square.
So it's this one?
Yes.
2007?
No, no, that's already there. Go left. Keep going left. Keep going. You said, that's Brentwood Boulevard right there, where you had it.
Yeah.
Move your, go south. There you go. 2006, right to the left of that, right to the left of your mouse.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
I was thinking also his suggestion.
Okay, so just for summary purposes, currently, that census, what is it called, census block?
Census tract, yeah.
Census tract is in Ward 2.
Right.
And the recommendation is to, from everybody, all three options, I think, have that moving into Ward 4.
Correct.
Anybody have any objection to doing that? Okay, so I think we're all on board with that.
And then Alderman Weggie also suggested, when I was getting confused, also moving Brentwood Promenade area.
No, it was 2006. Maybe I mistyped it.
Okay, 2000, oh, okay. So, because this map that you provided shows it going all the way over, so that's why, yeah.
It was bad Google Map clicking.
Okay.
Because he made all of these.
Yeah, they do, but they all show us, so.
Okay.
But the.
But that also does not affect Ward 4's population, as there's no residents in that area.
Okay, so we got that taken care of. So 2006, current 2006, the board's suggestion is to move that into Ward 4, from Ward 2. All right. That was probably the most difficult thing we're going to deal with tonight. Okay, so we got that off the table. Anything else that, an easy one? I didn't see any other possible changes, other than dealing with now the population. So again, I'm just going to throw, again, we just do this, if somebody wants to make a run at going with option 1, 2, or 3, you can make a motion to effect. We can see if somebody wants to second it, and then we can discuss it, like we normally do. Anybody feel strong enough? Alderman Lockmiller?
Make a motion that we go with option 2.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that? Are all ready to take a vote? Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the, the target of trying to balance as much as possible within the wards. I think that is one way of doing it. I'm not sure I agree with the definition of a split street, where it's whether your front door faces another front door that's in a different ward. That seemed to be the definition you were using of a split street, so I'm not sure I agree with that. The thing I don't like about that, honestly, is, is moving, use the block number here, 2033, you know, that, that has been in Ward 2 at least 20 years. I wasn't able to go back further. And, you know, the confusion to me would be if we're moving a lot of people into different wards, right? So option 2 would move 398, 368 people into a different ward than where they are right now, so approximately 5% of our population. I think that confusion would be far more than what they're used to right now of, you know, across the street is a different ward. So I'm not sure, again, I applaud the trying to, to level set to all things, but I think, I think there'd be more confusion with the number of people that were moving there.
And I, I apologize for not saying this early, but I do want to thank Alderman Gould, Alderman Lockmiller, Alderman Weggie for taking the time to put this together. This, clearly, you all put some serious time into this, and I do appreciate that, because you made it very, I think it very easy, and number one, number two, you've given us some, not us, you all some, some good options to go for. So thank you. So anybody else have any discussion about option 2?
Well, I would just like to say thank you for that, but I would also like to thank Jeff, because he did a lot of the heavy lifting on this, on this right after our discussion. But I, the reason why I like the option 2 is it kind of uses more of our main thoroughfares as borders. And I think a lot of times, a lot of the things that come before ARB, and even some of the traffic calming, is always within neighborhood blocks. You know, everybody knows each other from across the street, and so I think this option keeps us more on, I don't know how to exactly say it, but more neighbor-to-neighbor type borders on this type of thing. So I think it kind of squares everything up, and once again, keeps it to the, the main thoroughfares, instead of cutting into streets, neighborhood streets, I guess I'd say. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Gould?
Yeah, I would, I mean, obviously, I would agree with that. I think, you know, that's what I was referring to when I say split streets, is that when you, you have half, one half the street, one thing, and the other half the other, which we, we have in Ward 3 probably the most of all wards. And I can tell you, it does create ambiguity. Most, some people don't even know who they're, what ward they're in, no matter what, but then when you start talking about, oh, I talked to my neighbor, well, you, you're actually in Ward 2, you need to talk, you know, so it's, it's come up quite, and I've only been on the board for a short amount of time, and it's, it's been an issue. Maybe not a major issue, but it certainly has been one that I've noticed. I think what, what I like about option 2 as well is, you know, I think the nature of our, our terms are, are short terms, right? So I, I think relationships is, is only for a short amount of time. I think long-term, when you look at the development over the next several years, in 10 years, we're going to probably have a lot of development within Ward 3, and need to probably adjust these again. By cleaning them up along the border, the thoroughfare lines, it allows for those blocks that still extend in to be, to be easier absorbed into other wards without having all these zigzags everywhere. And so I think, I think for future, future debates about this, cleaning up the lines as much as possible, as straight as we can, you know, makes, makes more sense.
Stephanie, I don't know if you're able to answer this question, but Alderman Gould, when you think about, if, what he's talking about is obviously some possible development in 3, if we do see a large increase in population in Ward 3 or any ward, can you only redistrict at the time of the census? I'm assuming you can, right? You can't do it before there's another census.
Well, the census dictates that you, that you must.
Must, right.
At that point in time. So it is possible, if you want to undertake kind of a census of your own, if you do see a huge population.
Okay.
Or if you see additional people, I mean, I think that you should consider it in between, you know, the census, you know, half of your vote, and then the 1 in 2030, I think you should consider it to keep your one person, one vote.
Okay.
So there, it is possible. If you wanted to do that, if there is a huge development, a huge residential development, an apartment, you know, complex or something like that, and you do see any population, and you're concerned about your maximum deviation at that point.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
And to follow up on that, that's, that was my biggest concern about making Ward 2, or I'm sorry, Ward 3, the highest, or the, or even the second highest population at this point, because knowing that it's highly probable that conservatively a 200 to 300-person, you know, complex might go in along Manchester in, in the, in the three to five years, and then everything's thrown off, so.
All right. Anybody else? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have a problem. I disagree respectfully that it's highly probable of anything. I think the idea that we should reduce Ward 3 solely because we hope and pray that there's going to be development there. I mean, I, I don't think it's highly probable, and if it is, it's going to take years to happen. I mean, I, this is the information that we have. I have a problem with the speculative nature of, of what's baked into option 2.
Okay.
I, I think that, you know, we should deal with what we know. I know there are no, there, there have been no proposals submitted. We can't even get a master developer to bite on RFP. I mean, so, you know, to the idea that the, the hope and, hope and pray, well, some, you know, should, to do anything, I, I don't, I have a, I have a problem with that.
Okay. Alderman Gould?
Oh, I'm sorry, let's go with Alderman Tice. She hasn't had anything to say.
So this is maybe a question for Bola, but the, I know the parcel that is now 3010 used to be in Ward 1. And like, a decade ago, it was in Ward 1, and in this, this decade, it has been in Ward 3, and the proposal number 2 is suggesting moving it into Ward 2. So that particular block would have been in three different wards each time. Are there other blocks like that? Is 3010 in the 2020 map the only block that has been?
No.
Jumbled around to three different wards in each census?
Yeah, 3011 and 3012 were moved from Ward 1 to Ward 2 in 2010.
Which ones, 3?
Okay, so, so each of these, so each proposal, either one street would, one, one subsection would be in, in three different wards over three different censuses. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Gould?
Yeah, just, just to respond to Alderwoman Sims, I, which is exactly why on, on option 2, your rationale there, why option 2, the goal was to get it as close there, why option two, the goal was to get it as close to the ideal mean or the ideal population spread out as possible. And if you notice, that's the one that comes in with the max deviation of 5%, 5.1%. So that's, you know, that makes everything right now at a completely level playing field, so, which is the goal. No matter what happens in any ward, I mean, you all might, if Hanley Industrial develops and changes over, we might see that in Ward Two. And then we're, you know, so there's no guarantee, but that's exactly the reason why I looked for keeping it as level as possible.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, just a couple other thoughts on this is, you know, one is that you wanna preserve neighborhoods and features of the neighborhood. So, you know, option two basically takes Ward Two across Brentwood Boulevard and then shares a corner with the new elementary school, right? So, you know, if the current neighborhood we have in Ward Two, basically, we can cover all of the traffic issues coming around there, you do have Rogers Parkway, so it does touch on Three, but it is kinda isolated. This would involve Ward Two and the traffic problems over, you know, at McGrath as well. So you'd have basically, you know, a corner of that. I don't know, I don't think that does a good job of preserving, you know, the neighborhood, the features around these, I mean, they're the biggest things we have in this town, really. And then also just the compactness of Ward Two in this, it goes down significantly, I calculated it, you know, using this formula I found online, and so if you look at it, you know, it's got all these kinda legs going out now, and so the compactness of that ward is, does go down. And this actually, on average, for all of the wards, reduces the compactness of the wards, and that's just the ratio of the area to the perimeter.
Okay. I'm not gonna require you to show your work.
I would, I came prepared.
This engineer is ready to show his math.
That's why they don't give me a whiteboard up here, man.
Stephanie, in terms of procedure, do we need five yes votes for anything on this?
Well, that's going to be required for the ordinance, and so just to give us some comfort level with the legal descriptions that we're drawing up, we would like a consensus of five people.
Okay.
Now, with two people absent, I mean, that, yeah, I'm not quite sure what they would go with, but...
All right. Any further discussion on the motion of Alderman Lockmiller to go forward with option two? Any none? All in favor of option two, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, roll call.
Okay. Alderwoman Tice?
Oh, I hate to go first.
I'll say yes. Alderwoman Sims?
No.
Alderman Waggie?
No.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Shelton?
Yes.
Vote is four to two in favor of...
All right, so that motion, I guess, fails. Anybody wanna make a motion that's for another one?
What is it fail?
We want five.
Now, let's say that we make motions for all three options.
Yeah.
And we don't reach five on any of them.
Yeah.
Then I think what your direction into us would be the greatest number of yes votes for one of the options, that's the legal descriptions that we're gonna draw up.
Okay. Let me ask you, is there anybody here who's in favor of option one? Okay, so we can take that one off the table. So for all those holding out for option one, you're not, your vote is now released, and you can support one of the two remaining options. Okay. Well, let's just do very informal, a show of hands, how many are in favor of option Three? You're like...
Position known.
I can go for that one too.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, if I can, from my perspective, I kinda agree with the point that option Two, I support it because it gets us closer to level across all wards, so that I'm not opposed to the option Three, I guess, is what I'm pointing out, saying.
I just think that the little zigzag notches that now have for Ward One and Ward Two, that are Ward One and Ward Three, you know, you're talking about small little neighborhood blocks that then have short little streets with, you know, one neighbor on one side and the other neighbor on the other side that have two different representations, I just, you know, as much as we can correct that moving forward, we probably should. It just makes more sense to make them cleaner and as many, least amount of ambiguous blocks as possible. And these little zigzaggy notches just don't seem to get us, it may help you in Ward Two have a little cleaner boundary, but it doesn't for Ward One and Ward Three. So, you know, you're kinda just shifting the issue. I'd rather have, you know, intact rectangular blocks that are puzzle pieces rather than, you know, little zigzag notches.
Yeah, so can I give a little rationale on option Three? I mean, so the primary thing was minimize the number of citizens, residents, that are moving in between wards. So this has, I think, 110, 115 people that would be moving into a new ward as a result of this. And then, just for awareness, one was a little higher. I went through and counted how many houses are on a road with, across the street, and there's actually one less house that is on a boundary in option Three than option Two. So I'm not sure that option Two, and I'm gonna say that's plus or minus like five or 10 houses, 'cause I was counting very small little parcels, so I don't have super high confidence, but I'm not sure that option Two solves that problem. And it also, you know, again, makes them less contiguous, it makes Ward Three more contiguous, but it makes Ward Two much less. Contiguous might not be the right word, right? Compact. So I'm not sure it's meeting the intent with the problem of, you know, an additional 250 residents moving wards and all the chaos that that would cause.
Does that cause chaos? I mean, from a legal standpoint, is, in what I've looked at it for the, you know, sort of the goals for redistricting, it's never listed, move as many, as few amount of people as possible.
After all the other factors are considered, it is one thing that you could possibly consider, but there are more important considerations. And so it's certainly not a top consideration, it's something that you could consider once you have all of the other factors laid out and resolved. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I view that as, you know, desire to retain historic boundaries, right? And it's all these retention ones, it's retention of neighborhood boundaries, it's retention of precinct, oh, I don't know what that means, but retention of other communities of interest, and that's where the schools would be. So, you know, by minimizing that change, I think we're dealing with those retention items, several of them.
And I also don't agree with the characterization that this boundary is zigzaggy. I mean, I think they look pretty square to me. I mean, I've never had anyone come to me being confused about what ward they're in, they need only like do a simple Google search and enter their address to know what ward they're in. So, I mean, I...
I've had two in the past week in that little area that drops down from Ward Two. I think one called Brandon with a concern, didn't realize he was confused on what ward he was in in that area. And I think we've had one, a street issue that also was confused.
Which blocks are you talking about there?
It'd be the 2053.
Two in the how many years you've been an alderman?
No, that's just two this week, I mean, this month.
And just for clarification, that confusion about Ward Two versus Ward Three was somebody who across the street was also Ward Three, right? So it wasn't a split street?
No, it wasn't a split street, but...
First of all, what area are we talking about here?
Where you get down to, you got 3,000, just south of Litzinger.
Okay.
Yeah.
3,000 or 3,009?
Yeah, and then...
On the old map?
2034.
Oh, I'm just looking on the, okay, what map are you on?
2054 of the old map.
2054 on the old?
Yeah, well, no, it's 2053. Which map are you on? No, you're right, he was in 2017. And the other guy was in 2053. I mean, it's, I just get confusions down in that area. I don't, can't remember exactly what homes they were in that area. And I think Jeff's had some too. But mine, I like the deviation, the less, the smaller deviation in the option two of all three options.
Well, I can tell you, my preference would be to get five votes, simply because we don't have Alderwoman O'Neal or Alderman Plufkin, we don't know where they're gonna come down with this. So if we have a final vote, next special, let's say we have four votes, yes votes for one thing, well, and if these two show up at the next one, and, you know, if they don't support that, then we've got a problem.
Right.
But if we get five yes votes tonight, then I think we've kind of, it's safe to say, regardless of what Alderwoman O'Neal or Alderman Plufkin wanna do, we know we can go forward with whatever we decide tonight. So I would like to get this to five votes, either one, two or three. So...
Will you write the legal on both?
That's a good point. It's a good idea, yeah, we could do it both ways.
I honestly, candidly, I have absolutely no idea how Alderman Plufkin or...
No, I don't either.
...will come down on this.
Yeah, well, what would be involved in writing two separate ordinances for Two and Three? Okay. Engineering firm to do the, to come up with the legal description. Okay.
Can I direct staff to do so?
Sure.
I'll make that motion, direct staff to do whatever work to put before the board option Two and Three.
Second.
Great. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, I'm always in favor of kicking the can down the road if we can, and we've done that effectively just now. So, so I guess that's where we're going. And we'll come back, we'll have another special board of alderman meeting, it is probably next week, does it, it's gonna have to be next week, right? 'Cause this has to be done by the sixth. So, next week is Thanksgiving. I don't know if anybody's got anything, anybody getting married or anything like that, that they're not gonna be available for the meeting?
As long as it's not on Saturday.
Not on Saturday.
What about Monday? I can't do Tuesday.
I don't think Kathy will be here.
She's gone for a while.
That's why we kinda...
Oh, is she?
Yeah, she's...
She's neutralized. She's just not, generally not available.
Plufkin's just...
He might be here.
He should be. Oh, yeah, but I don't, I mean, I haven't heard from him. Hmm?
He just couldn't be here tonight.
He said he would call me, he thought his meeting would go till 6:30, 7 o'clock, and I said, "Well, just give us a call if you're done," and I haven't heard from him, so my guess is... Brandon's on that, Alderman Waggie's on that, and Kathy, but Alderwoman O'Neal will not be here, is that right? She's out of town. So we don't know, well, I guess it doesn't really, well, so let's just say hypothetically, we end up with six people attending the next meeting. We would actually need five yes votes, because... That's right. Okay, so, that's the challenge that we have.
I mean, what's, I mean, I just can't be here on Tuesday. I mean, is there...
No, that's fine.
And is there anything on the sustainability? I don't know who's the chair, I mean, what is the, what takes more precedence that's gonna happen on the sustainability committee that outweighs what's going on right now?
I don't think there...
Such that maybe they can go into another room?
Or could we do 5 o'clock?
They actually meet in the conference room.
Who can make it 7 o'clock on Monday night? Okay, we've got six for here on Monday night, we'll just hope that Alderman Plufkin can make it, or Alderwoman O'Neal zoom in. Can we do that orally tonight?
Can you vocally say we wave?
I wave.
I wave.
I am calling for a...
But it is, yeah, it is on the record anyway.
I am scheduling a special board of alderman meeting for next Monday at 7 o'clock. Anyone here willing to wave notice, written notice of that?
Yes.
Yes, I wave.
Yes, I wave.
Everybody waves notice, okay. Good, okay. And Kathy, if we can get her to show up. Okay, citizen comments, anybody care to address the board? Nobody? All right, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, everybody. We'll see everybody tomorrow morning, coffee with the mayor, and our late observance of Veterans Day.